It is six o'clock. We will go ahead and call a meeting to order. If you would, please rise. I'll ask Pastor Jimmy Dennis to give us our invocation.
If you would, please bow your heads with me. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be your name. For in your kingdom come your will be done here and today. You said first of all, pray for those in leadership and have whoever responds. Father, I pray in the name of Jesus that you give each one wisdom and the knowledge of your will today. Father, our city needs leadership. Our city needs righteousness. Father, I pray that it starts right here. God, whatever decision they make, it will glorify God. And Father God, your perfect will will be done. Lord, if there's anything in these families, God, this sickness or disease, I'm asking you to heal it, Jesus. We thank you for it, Lord. We give you all the praise. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Dennis. This time Councilmember Bryant will lead us in the pledges.
Place flag with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas. One state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please proceed. Victor Wade can come forward, please. Victor won an award and it's my pleasure to be able to give this to him. Since we want to give a special recognition to Victor Wade, multimedia specialist, who received the Texas Association of Municipal Information Officers Award for populations of cities over 70,000. We want to thank you for everything you've done and thank you for all your hard work. But thank you. We are going to reread the agenda just a little bit. We're going to go under ordinances. We're going to consider ordinance, revision. Oh, I'm sorry. We're going under public hearing. No, I'm sorry, resolution. Consider second Odessa College Training Facility grant. I believe Charles Carlson and Dr. Williams.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm here this evening to recommend that that we grant Odessa College, a ODC grant for up to $8 million for the remodeling of school work facilities that has been donated to Odessa College. Dr. Williams is here to answer any questions the council might have. We have, this grant has gone through the compliance committee. It was unanimously approved. We went to the board of ODC, the ODC board has unanimously approved this grant and recommendation to the council. We also met with finance committee and discussed the terms of the grant and the reimbursement for the grant. Approximately 60% of the grant will be for an auto remodeling facility so that it can be used as an auto tech facility. The remainder of the grant will be used to train truck drivers, to train in a safety program, provide medical tech facilities, educational facility, and other training space. And we'd like to note that according to last week, the college had had, previous year it had, gets the biggest year ever. And even with the downturn and so percent increase and layoffs in the oilfield, the college is right now had grown 18, 60% and it's in the for the current year. So continues to grow. I think training, all the guidelines that are established for an economic fellow corporation have been met. I'd like Dr. Williams to state his case. And we will be available to answer any questions.
Okay. Dr. Wade?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, all present, city manager. We thank you all for hosting us today. It feels kind of different being saying that. But we are proud to be here. We humbly come before you with this request to continue to serve the people of Odessa. Again, we're very proud that ODC has supported this. We have talked to, with the finance committee. We've tried to answer each and every question to make sure that everything is as squared away as possible. What we would do with these funds, as Charles said, and we do thank Charles for his leadership with ODC and for his work. We're looking at customizable truck driver training, which would allow significant quality improvements, which would increase the pass rates of those individuals who are looking for their CDL. We, not only will we have the additional trucks with your support, but we will be able to afford two simulators so that individuals will be able to have, and we don't have that currently in this area. So you would be either behind the wheel of a truck or you can improve based on simulated experience working with an automatic vehicle or standard. So we will give you that kind of training. So it takes us to a really, really additional level with that training. Sewell Auto Tech would be enhanced, keeping up with the increasing technology and computer demands. That facility is about three times as large as the facility that we had planned with the bond. And this will allow us to take the funds that we have for that, pair those with these funds, and we'll be able to put about $8 million into that project itself and to bring it up to speed so that it can do auto diesel training plus customized training and through CE and other work that needs to be done. In addition, radiologic technology, we'll be able to bring rad tech facilities up to standard and we'll be able to, so that individuals who work in either the hospital or in a physician's office can do that work, as well as continuing to enhance our work in terms of electronics, automation, and instrumentation, which are high demand fields in this area. Again, allowing individuals to get the training, get the help and support, and then to get to work and become taxpayers, which continues the cycle of support for what we're all trying to do. So again, we thank you for your support. We look forward to your support and we're prepared to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from council?
I don't have any questions. I'd like to comment. First of all, I want to say thank you, Charles, for stepping in and becoming the chairman for the ODC. You've done a really good job and I'm very proud of what you've done and where you're going to lead this ODC. I had the privilege of attending the presentation and I was very, very impressed. With the way the trends are going and from what I hear, the oilfield companies out there are, I mean, they're hiring left and right. They're having job fairs all the time. I don't think that this is something that we can, you know, I guess, take our time on and do year by year. I think we need to move on this quickly so that way we can make sure that the workforce that we have is readily available and be ready to take on the jobs and everything. But I was very, very impressed with what you all did, what you all been able to accomplish, and your building was tremendous.
Thank you very kindly. I try not to pay attention to that. The mayor gives me a really hard time. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your kind.
And I too would like to thank you very much because I truly believe we need to grow our home and you are doing that for us. Thank you very much.
Are there comments?
This is a three-year grant with majority the first 12 months, which is the $5 million, if I recall, the first 12 months. And then that's primarily to take care of the building costs for the school, et cetera, et cetera. Correct?
It really, it depends on the process doing. It's an after the fact grant, so if they get the contracts awarded, it'll start progress. We're going to start paying them as payments come due. But construction will start before we start funding or engineering and architectural stuff.
Again, the reason why I mention is just make sure that the audit and the checklist are appropriately documented where we go forward because I think it's a great project again and appreciate Dr. Williams. Junior crew back here, your constituents that are here with you.
Wonderful group. Also, keep in mind, we still have a really wonderful tenant in that facility.
Of course you will.
And we are, and we're patient, but as soon as they, as soon as the Sewell family moves on to their next outstanding property, then we can get in and start that work.
Any other questions? Dr. Williams, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your work. And thank you for your vision for Odessa College. I'll entertain a motion.
Some more.
A little second.
A motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passing, unanimous.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have all made tonight, so we will.
Thank you. Now we'll go back up to the top of the agenda. Item four, citizens' comments on non-agenda item. We'll move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Motion. Motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Motion passing, unanimous. Next, we will move to public hearings. Mr. Burnley has instructed us to leave this on the table, so we will move to item three. We will open a first public hearing on proposed tax rate and to consider levying the tax for 2017 tax year. Mr. Over.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. It's a privilege for us to be here. I'm standing next to our budget manager, Jamie Meyer. And quickly I'll turn it over to her because she's done all the work. She does an excellent job of doing this. She's learned and grown in this position and does great work here. So with that, I'll turn it over to her to present the FY '18 budget.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Thanks for letting us be here tonight. This is the hearing for the tax rate, correct?
Yes.
So the property tax code section 26.06 requires two public hearings. If a tax rate is proposed that exceeds the effective rate, the proposed tax rate of 49.3248 cents exceeds the effective tax rate and will increase the total property tax revenues by 8.3% over the preceding year. The second public hearing will be held on the September 12th, regularly scheduled council meeting. The proposed tax rate provides for the continuation of the 20% general residential homestead exemption, the senior citizen exemption of 15,000, the 5,000 to 12,000 disabled veteran exemption, the 5,000 exemption for disabled veterans, and the other state mandated exemptions, all of which have been included in the calculation of total taxable values for the FY 2018 year. The exemptions for FY '18 to total 1.78 billion dollars. The total taxable value for Odessa is $7,426 million and this is an increase of 2.17% compared to the previous tax year, 2016. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions from Ms. Meyer?
I'd just again like to reiterate the point of the exemptions as far as taxable value, total 1.78 billion.
Yes.
Within the city. About 23% of the.
Any other questions? Okay, well, this is a public hearing, so at this time we will open up the floor for any public comment on this agenda item, which is proposed tax rate. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing. We will open a public hearing for the fiscal year 2018 annual budget. Ms. Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this sections 102.006 and 102.007 of the local government code requires that the city council conduct a public hearing on the budget prior to its approval on the next city council meeting on September 12th, 2017. A copy of the proposed budget was filed with the city secretary and the county clerk on August 7th, 2017. This is a total budget of 210 billion in revenues, I'm sorry, 210 million in revenues and 207 million in expenditures. The general fund, we're looking at 86 million in expenditures and 88 million in revenues.
Okay. Any questions from council?
I do have a comment. I don't have a problem with the annual budget. I do have a problem with us taxing and raising the taxes when we have a surplus in our, like. I'm glad the city is so gracious to allow us all these tax incentives. That's a nice thing. I hope that always continues. I think we have to be real careful because it's real easy to spend the taxpayer's money. Real, real easy to do that and we can always find ways to spend taxpayer money. And I know this is a big tax increase, but it's still a tax increase. We all know that if they don't put down, then it's going to be even worse.
Any other comments?
Yeah. I just have a question of why is it that during the boom, why didn't we increase taxes during that time instead of now when, you know, our recovery is really a bit shaky right now? Why are we increasing our taxes now?
That's an excellent question and in fact, the city council last year lowered the tax rate below the effective rate. Meaning that to, understanding exactly what you just reiterated or what you just said, the city council took in less money than they took the year before. And it's been 15 years or so that the city has had a tax rate lower than the previous year. So we've done that through the booms and the busts. We have seen a small recovery. I mean, we were 21 months going the wrong direction in sales tax and now we're on about eight months of positive in our sales tax revenue. Also, the strength of relying more on property tax and on sales tax. We've been reliant on sales tax for many years and then when those boom and bust cycles come, it affects us more dramatically than having a more secure property tax rate. It's a small increase, as Councilmember Gardner says, nine cents a day for the average sized home. And that sounds potentially a little bit right. It's 2.75 a month and 33 dollars a year. So it's not dramatic, but it is a tax increase. So, and it's a portion of the overall property tax. But to change that direction of relying more on property tax, which is a more stable base for us as a city, will help us overall in the long run more than bouncing around with the sales tax and not the higher base for us.
Well, my concern is for those who are elderly here, who are on fixed income. I mean, the reality is they have to eat. They have to have a place to stay. And the fact is that generally these people also have a multiple medical obligation. So therefore, they're going through the pharmacy buying three and four prescription, you know, that are undoubtedly, at a undoubted price. So, yeah, nine cents doesn't sound like much, but to a person on fixed income, that's, you know, they have to make a decision on whether I'm going to buy this medication, you know, or I'm going to pay my, you know, pay my other obligations. So that's just my, that's just my concern.
Any other comments here?
Oh. I have a question. With our one-time expenditures, if we didn't do that this year, how would that affect our budget? We need to do the tax increase?
The one-time expenditures coming out of this fiscal year, total 2.25 million dollars.
How much?
2.25 million, 2.35, 2.25.
How would that affect tax rate?
Well, one cent equals about $711,000. We're increasing the tax rate by 2.268 cents, which is approximately 1.3 million, somewhere around there.
Okay. Other questions?
I mean, one of the ways I'm looking at it is the way it was explained to me or us was in order to meet the obligations of the 3% increase for the employees, that's not a one-time deal. We need revenue to, for futures because it's not 3% this year and then we go down. So we need it in order to maintain what we have and grow.
Yes, so that's correct.
I'd call for a question, if we could.
We actually don't have a question, but I will open up a public comment. Because we are not voting on it. At this time, it's just a public hearing. So if you would like to speak on this or would like to come forward, you just give us your name and your address.
Bobby Compton. I do work in the oil field. And I will say one thing, wages have not come up to the employees in the oil field. This is just something on top of what we've lost in a downturn and have not got them back. It is a burden on everybody. And that's the main part. I'd like to say this, it doesn't look like it is going to turn around as fast as people think. I hear from our offices everywhere. And I'm just going to be upfront, I just don't see raising the taxes on people that have to work.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak?
Yeah, I have another question if I may ask. On a $100,000 home, how much will this tax increase affect that home?
The average sized home in the city is about 160,000, but our analysis was 150,000. We were lazy and our math. That's the nine cents. 150,000 is nine cents a day. 2.275 cents a month and 33 dollars a year increase. So $100,000 home would be half that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? Okay, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing. Oh.
Okay, I just kind of have a quick question here.
Sure, come on now. No, come on now. No, wait. It's in the microphone. Just give us your name and your address.
Certainly. My name's William Ayer. Address is, I'm actually from Lubbock. I'm the West Texas Field Rep for the Texas Association of Realtors. And I just had a quick question here regarding the taxable value. You know, we're looking at the taxable value and it looks like from 2014 to 2017, there's been roughly an increase of a billion dollars in taxable value there. So my question is, you know, we've had increase in revenues each year. Why is it with all this extra taxable value, we're still looking for more funds?
Actually, I can answer that question. Over the last 15 years, our growth, our values have grown as new buildings have been built and values have gone up. And during that time, council has lowered the tax rate by 22 cents. So they've given most of that growth back by lowering the tax rate.
So then my follow-up question would be then, at what point do you think that's going to negatively impact the market? The continual reduction or the continual increase in property taxes? When do you think that's going to impact the?
Well, I would argue there hasn't been a continual increase in tax rate.
But there's been an increase in revenues.
There's been a drop. Yes, there's been an increase in cost for a lot of those services. The reality is the property tax revenue that are generated by the folks that pay taxes here in Odessa, that's me and everybody else in this room owns property, that revenue doesn't even cover our police budget of $28 million. We have to have other sources to cover things like streets, parks, fire, and everything else.
So at what point do you see that capping off, you know, to the point where, at what point does that stop, the new revenues? At what point do you think that?
I can't say that it will cap off as our job is to grow the city and that's happening in our community, as you pointed out. The values have grown over time and that's a good thing. But we also have to provide services to meet those commitments.
Makes sense. Okay. Just wanted to get a little clarification on that.
Thank you. Okay, we will. Unless anybody else would like to stand up, we will close the public hearing.
Well, I actually would like to add to what Mr. Compton said. He said the wages are stagnant in the field and it doesn't look to, you know, it's really on the fence right now. And I think the open in the room is the fact that the DCIC is increasing. It's looking to, with the bond issue, which is going to pretty much saddle back residents as well. So I don't, I don't see why we need to increase our taxes.
Go ahead and close the public.
We got one for comment over here.
I'm sorry, I couldn't see.
I'm Larry Crutcher, number nine, as well, of the court of Odessa. Couple, three months ago, I was fortunate to be at the Chamber of Media retreat. I believe there were five institutions there. We had three colleges, the county, the city. I sat through presentations of each one. And a year before, I sat through presentations of them. And I believe the year before that. As a businessman, when my revenue doesn't increase, I had to cut expenses. But out of those five presentations, I never heard anyone devote anytime to saying, this is what our institution has done to cut the costs. It went on everybody. The answer is, let's just increase some taxes. It's only $30 for the city. It's only 50 for the county. It's only 40 for the school district. I'm like the others, I don't see my revenue go up. We had to take, we had to rob Peter at PayPal if somebody suffers. And again, it's the fixed income. Thank you very much. I'd like to see someone to book some efforts saying, this is what our city has done to hold up the mantle of Texas.
Mr. Crutcher, before you leave, let me ask you a few questions. Because I'm accustomed to people always saying, cut the taxes, cut the taxes, cut the taxes. Please tell us what services that we need to cut. Because you said we need to tighten our belt, we need to cut services. So just tell me.
I would give you an example that's not in the city and it's been a while. When I go down to extra county courthouse and there are five.
We're not the county, remember.
I'm just saying as an example.
But speak to city, please.
Okay. Then what efforts have we made to privatize things? What efforts has the city made to say, we didn't add any more administrative staff? Okay, for the city, I was down in the city today. Three, four years ago, when there was really lots and lots of activities, there was an apartment down there that had one person. I'm down there today. I believe they've got four. Construction's down. Activities down. Now we've got four people on the city payroll and we used to have one.
Which departments?
No, sir, I'm not going to do that. But that's.
We need to be able to say, this is the reason.
But again, sir, I have to deal with these departments. But I'm saying, hey, what effort is there? Or is there a process that we reevaluate? Do we go from zero budgeting instead of saying, well, the department, this department spent $100,000 last year, so we've got to have 102. two this year.
Thank you.
You know, I would just add what you said. I, I, I understand that. I mean, I wanna turn my water hydrant on and get water when I turn it on. I wanna, when I flush the toilet, I don't want everything to go away. I, I, I wanna have good streets to drive on. I know that costs, understand that costs pounds. My, my problem with the deal is if we have a surplus here, cushion, as some have called it, but padding, well, then why do we need to raise taxes if we have that? And so I think the city, I think the city does a good job at, at managing what money we have. I, I, I really do. I, I, I've looked through that budget and looked through it and I, and I think it's a good, I think it's a good budget. But I think we could do budget for our city, city employees, the three percent raise that they need and still stay within a budget.
But when, when you get your, and I understand you're not the county, but when you get your tax bill and your assessed value is up this year or last year, and then your rate is increasing, it's not just the one, one mill or two mills. You're getting double whammy this tax rate.
Thank you. If I could make one comment, I think that it was very well worth reiterating that, that City Manager Morton said is that the amount of money that we receive off of our property taxes will barely cover the budget associated with just our police force. And, and we all want protection. We all want those things that are associated. We, we can't lean on sales tax revenue, uh, which we have in the past, that had a twenty to twenty-five percent decrease last year, in, in order to provide the needs of this city, a growing city, that construction is up in, in that regards. I, I wish, uh, Mr. Burnett was here to, to send out the publication of the things that have increased over this last year, uh, since January. I'm not talking about two thousand sixteen, I'm talking about since January. Uh, you know, they, they've got to be funded somewhat. And, and, uh, that in my mind is a big number where you're, you're talking property taxes, you're talking about a very big part of the budget needed in this community being the protection of our citizens.
I agree with what I have seen. You elect officials to come and say, we've held the line here. We've reduced this, we've privatized this to hold the line. Are our headcount, are we holding the headcount of the city?
You know, I can speak to privatizing because, uh, I've been with an entity in the past, did some privatizing and it ended up costing us more money than if we did it ourselves. So we went back to doing it ourselves and found that we were doing a much better job. So.
So, and, and then what, then what I'm hearing from you guys, hey, we're just doing the absolute best we can and there's no room for improvement. Sir, you're fixed in the income family. Just gotta tighten your belt. There's one prescription, cut, cut fill and hang.
Well, but I'm not saying we're doing everything perfect. We're not. But there's areas we've looked at privatizing, the garbage. We can't do it and keep your rate words out. So, okay, but we've also privatized, or we're actually self-insured when it comes to our employees because we've been able to keep that lower. As you've seen what insurance rates have done, fifty, sixty percent increases. We kept ours to the low end of that scale. That's something that's been done. It's fantastic. Unfortunately, we don't let that out and that's our, our error. But there are areas we have done that. We've looked at even selling your garbage. We were looking at selling your garbage to be able to bring revenue in. But this council has also done some fantastic things. We sold your toilet water and have started reworking on the water treatment plant at someone else's expense. So we've done some things very well. We're gonna get a hundred and ten million dollars, our pioneer, because we sold your toilet water, we were putting down Montan's draw. And that, you don't see in any other cities. That's things we have come up with and we've done it. This council's been fantastic to do it. So.
Mayor, maybe part of it is, as we have in so many places, we definitely lack of communication of those good things coming or, or tax things.
Well, unfortunately, the media doesn't cover the good things. Media typically covers bad things. So, thank you.
What, thank you, thank you so much.
Conrad?
Yes.
Can you answer what type of effect will this have on the quality of life overall in Odessa, this tax increase?
Yeah, what?
Will this have some type of effect on the quality, overall quality of life in Odessa?
Well, I think you have to look at in the past, what we've done, how much we spend on parks to make things better, how much we spend on roads to make things better. Unfortunately, roads are sky high. We're spending eleven million dollars from Andrews Highway to Grandview on University. One, because you can't drive down that street without bumping somebody. And we're doing things like that. So as far as quality of life, I'll let you hand that off to you.
Well, can I, can I say one thing? During those fifteen years when we dropped the tax rate by twenty-two cents, we also issued, um, fifty-three million dollars to work on parks and streets without impacting the tax rate. We've issued seventy-nine thou, seventy-nine million dollars to replace old water and sewer lines in the city without impacting the tax rate. So that does affect quality of life. The council over the last fifteen years, and the councils has done an excellent job of balancing the need for revenue and giving some of that growth back to the community. And they have reduced the tax rate by that twenty-two cents. Um, this is the first time in fifteen years that we're actually talking about a tax rate increase. Um, yes, it's, it's unpleasant, but it, it's, it's necessary to provide the services that we, that our citizens want and ask for. And again, the revenue that we get from property tax, the general fund, does not even cover the police budget of twenty-eight million dollars. Um, it's, it's a necessary evil. I, I can sit here and say, hey, we could get rid of the property tax altogether. We just put on everybody's water bill, we'll put a, divide the, the number of water bill accounts that we have, divide that twenty-eight million by that number, and guess what? The average bill to every citizen would be about seven hundred dollars a year. But that is unfair to citizens that may have a fifty thousand dollar house and they're currently paying the city only two hundred dollars a year versus somebody that has a million dollar house and they're currently paying two thousand dollars a year. That's why property tax is, it's, it's taxed, it's, it's, it's an evil necessity, but it's a fair way to do it. So it's based on the property value of your house.
I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree with you that version, but I, I mean, you said that, uh, the people absorb the, uh, tax cut. However, I, I think the thing that we're not really speaking about is the inflation, the inflation, inflation that has, you know, everything's gone up. Um, you know, all the way down to the local food run on show. So these people are still paying the inflated prices. You know, the oil flow's gone down by the prices around here, if not. So if we were to tax him or increase the taxes, you're, you're taking additional pennies out of the pocket and that, you know, a lot of people are not sitting on a wall of cash, so to speak. Sorry.
Just a name and your address.
Renssens, fifteen sixteen Eagle Wood Lane. And I'm the current, uh, Odessa Board of Realtors President. And some things that I'd like to, um, concern about property ownership is that we had the, the housing bubble, however, six, six years ago, seven years ago, and our government's going back to the housing bubble. We have just recently received that, um, lenders are lending on fifty percent debt-to-income ratio. And that's on gross income. So when you, when you think of gross income and someone making five thousand a year and they are qualified on maybe a twenty-five hundred dollar loan, that doesn't go very far. And when you take into account currently that the city's doing a tax increase proposing, county's proposing, the IS, ISD is proposing one, the hospital is, um, proposing one, and then bonds on top of that and whatever else, and you include the hailstorm and insurance companies raising rates along with it, you're going to see a negative impact on homeownership. People that were at twenty-five hundred dollars, they were get, making their payment, now goes up when you include all those things, you're talking, uh, insurance maybe another hundred, two hundred dollars a month, you're going to find a negative impact on homeownership. Foreclosures, the people that were paying those property taxes no longer can afford homeownerships. Rental side.
Just question, this is a charity, the, uh, Realtors. What's the average time on the market now?
We are at sixty-three days is the last time I saw from active to under contract. And then you have another thirty days.
So where was that last year?
Uh, I don't. We're, we're down a little bit with that.
And the year before?
We'll have that.
Wasn't it ninety-something, uh, last year and, and some, whatever.
And then you talk about property owners that are leasing homes. That's gonna be passed on to the tenants and, you know, with the, with the rate hike on rental and I, I, we've talked about affordable housing in the area. I just think that with all of these things coming, it may be something that we need to really look at and sit down with numbers to figure out.
No, and, you know, but the bond is up to the people, so.
Absolutely.
That's up to the voters.
Absolutely.
And we don't have anything to do with that, so.
Understand, but it's going to be asked of the taxpayers themselves as well, whether it goes through or not. Well, thank you, sir.
One, uh, one question I would ask Conrad is what, uh, based on last year's budget, we, we, we met our budget back here, right? And we come out ahead of probably, I wouldn't tag you down there exactly, but just a, just a close ballpark test, but how, how much does it look like we're gonna come out at the end of the year, the end of this budget year ahead?
Well, with all our revenue line items, the main, as you know, we are, our big three are property, sales and franchise tax. That, that, that's seventy.
But we're gonna have that much more money.
Sales tax is, is the one that, that fluctuates that we're trying to get. And it's probably four to five million dollars. We, we have another month. Um, we go to September thirtieth in this fiscal year. Um, based on how things are coming in, we're four to five million above in our sales tags. Um, but at the same time, as, as, as our city manager said, our, our, um, our police budget is, is around twenty-eight plus a million and our property tax intake is about twenty-six point eight or something like that.
I understand that.
So, so, um, and, and as Councilmember Graff was mentioning, the tough, the tough thing is, do you want, do you want your response time to go from four minutes to five minutes? Do you want, I mean, it's tough cutting when, when you're used to that.
We're not asking that. We, we didn't cut, we didn't cut anything in this kind of budget.
Right.
We didn't cut anything. All I'm, all I'm saying is this, we're gonna end up on the positive side. Let's just say four million dollars. Let's, let's just say four million, right?
Budget is proposed.
Okay, if we have, we, we have, if you take, if you take out the one point three million that we're gonna raise the taxes, if you take that off of the budget this year, took that revenue right off the top of it, you've still got a balanced budget with some left over, right?
Um, yeah.
Providing sales tax does what we consider, and I, I know we budgeted concerned, we can, you guys always do that. We always do that. My point is, if we were set in the shape that the county's in, I'd say, you know what, guys? We're broke. We, we don't have any choice but to bump it a little bit.
I understand that.
But the city's not in that point. As the mayor said, we're not worried about these other taxing entities right here at this table. We're, we're looking at the city of Odessa. We've got a padding, a cushion. And I don't think governments should overtax people, whether it's stormwater drinking. There's another dub here. We're taxing people. That's all my point. I, 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 I wanna make sure, I, I don't wanna cut these guys back. I wanna make, I don't wanna cut their budget back with their response time to go down with that. I'd never, I'd never be a part of anything like that. We don't have to do that. That's my point. We don't have to do that. Maybe next year, maybe we've got it. Next year, three percent, three percent. But this year, we don't.
Councilmember, that's, that was just a leak easy enough. I mean, compare us in there. There's all the different functions that, as you know, that the city provides.
I agree.
And, and of course, we can do as the council wants to do. And, and will it be noticed dramatically? Probably not, not one year. But I mean, if it continue down that road, probably, I mean, as you go forward. But it's just the philosophy of, of the governing body deciding how we want, what, what services and, and products do we wanna provide our residents and at one cost. And what do they want?
I would just like to, it, it is a necessary evil tax, I understand. But why during a downturn? That's, that's my biggest question.
Right. And, and we're considering like the last eight months is, has been an uptick. I mean, a substantial uptick. Um, and as, as we mentioned, we'll be four or five million dollars over in our sales tax projections than what we did in the prior year. We were seven to eight million below. So I mean, it was a huge hit. I mean, when we had the downturn going on. So, so that fluctuation is what we're trying to get away from a little bit to provide the more responsive government to utilize a regressive tax instead of a progressive tax. It's, it's what the thought process. What's, uh, what's this, uh, personal services on the current expenditure, seventy-eight point eight million? What does that entail? Um, that's all the personnel in the city, the cost to run the city. I, I think.
salaries and benefits.
All the, all the cost of personnel. And that's, that is the bulk cost of, of providing, of running a city. That's payroll? It's, it's all.
Payroll, benefits.
All the personnel are the cost. During, during the budget workshop, we presented you with two options. One was a possible tax increase. The other was keeping it at the effective rate, basically. And we, we shared with you the needs of the departments who had over sixteen million dollars in, in needs. And we presented a possibility of a three percent pay increase versus, uh, not doing that. Staff's prepared to do whatever council desires to do, but at this point, staff is recommending this tax rate.
We're not voting on anything tonight. This is just a public hearing. So, uh, is there any more comments from the public? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Uh, we'll move to ordinances. Consider an ordinance revision to propose a new fee structure at Ratliff Ranch Golf Course. Mr. Patton, Mr. Patton, you're limited to three minutes.
Just three. I make this fast, no doubt. During the budget process, I do want to note that we look at all of our numbers very closely. We monitor that very close and I quite certainly have served that. That's a great job at it. Uh, during this budget process, we did see a little bit of a shortfall to increases in, uh, the pumping costs for getting water to us. That's always the, uh, issue every year because CRMWD does charge us electrical costs to get the water up to the golf course. Gotta have some water to get, uh, the grass green. And, and in addition to that, we are freezing two positions. We are cutting back and at the golf course, but, uh, to make a lot of this balance out as far as our budget, we are gonna increase our prices. And a couple of things I will note about those price increases, there is a three dollar increase in our most popular weekend rate. And there's also a three dollar increase in our most popular, uh, the weekday rate. And those two rates are going up three dollars, um, basically. And with that, it's gonna get us, I think, closer to being in the black and maintaining in the black and on a, I think, a better path than where we've been. We've looked in the past to make some increases. I think to offset that, it's still give people the opportunity to have some recreation. Those that are avid golfers, we did go down in the annual rate passes. So if you play fifty-four times, you're basically going to zero out in those costs. And so that's an added value. If you are, um, a regular at Ratliff Ranch, we did make concessions and reduced the annual pass rate. So that is a discount rate by a hundred dollars. And that's, that is gonna be a good deal, especially for those that have some problems with, um, their budgeting, personal finances. They've got the rate there with annual pass. Our weekend weekday rate is our most popular rates and those are, uh, everything's gonna be increased, but those are the most two. We're still rounds driven. Um, we calculated this based on our, um, lowest year rounds, which is. We calculated this based on our lowest year rounds, which is about 39,000 rounds. So, I think we've got a good recommendation for a new fee structure out there.
A lot of golf. Any questions from council?
Yes, I do. How do our rates compare? Are we the same, higher, less than the other golf courses in town?
In town?
In Odessa.
No, we're significantly above our competitor Sunset. Now, we, we don't come in, we're close to the country club, but that's a whole different type of facility. It's being private-driven. Our biggest competitor is Hogan over in Midland, and they're about to go up on their rates. And surprisingly, Andrews County Club is our biggest competitor also. And we have a table of comparison that is attached to the agenda audit, where we have noted all of those rates. And we will be right in line on Nueva Vista, which is pretty much our, about the same size as what we are in Midland, about the same comparison, but they don't do near as many rounds, they do about as fast as many rounds. Nueva will still be about a dollar higher than we will be on our weekday, on our weekday rates. So, we're close to that. On the weekend rates, we will actually be a dollar higher than Nueva Vista. And Sunset is $27, we'll be $32. So, I think the market and where we are with the quality of golf that we provide and the condition of the course of where we are today, that it can support this type of fee structure. We've been very well blessed with a lot of rain, and that course is raining, it's beautiful. It is really nice this time of year, this time of year, and we've got some good making screw, we've kept up with it. You know, we've approved, because as I did mention, we've frozen two positions, and that started quite some time ago, and we've made it through our most busiest part of the season, minus two people that we had in the past.
Okay, other questions? Steve, you did a great job, I think. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
At this point, I'll accept the...
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion on the second, any discussion? Here, none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, Jean Anderson. We have no appointments to the MOUTD right now. We do have two, the Cable Franchise.
I'd like to reappoint Nathan. I'm sorry, is it Martha Sauer?
We got Nathan, if you want to reappoint Nathan.
Indiana.
Yes, I would like to reappoint Indiana.
Okay.
Who was that again?
Reappointed.
Reappointed Nathan Bieber, Bieber?
Bieber.
Bieber. Indiana Bieber, Jill Donalds. Okay, Odessa Housing Corporations.
I would like to comment in regards to the fact that Odessa Housing Finance, it's a large, large project going on right now on 87th Street, and, you know, one of the, one of the appointees is, is the president of the Odessa Housing, who's been involved for numerous years, and from Jill Miller, who runs the Odessa Housing Finance Corporation, as well as some of the other members, who had thought it would be very, very prudent to continue her appointment for maybe a year. I do not think it fits the, the bylaws of Odessa Housing Finance Corporation, but they are changeable, according to what I understand from Mr. Long. And I think it would be prudent for us with the large project to, for Cruz and Connie to appoint them to their regular terms, and Melanie to a one-year term for completion of that project.
You know, Dewey, I, I hear what you're saying, but to me, bylaws are bylaws. We, all of us have term limits, and I don't care how good a job you are doing, your term limit's not gonna be extended.
But weren't the bylaws...
I know she's a lawyer, I know she does it free.
Weren't the bylaws changed at the city?
You're supposing there are no other lawyers that would...
For ten, for no terms? Weren't the terms here at the city for two years?
The, my understanding, when we appointed last year, you didn't worry. Oh, there you are. They weren't changed when we reappointed those other two. Is that right?
It's correct.
But I'm talking about the city of Odessa, not the terms in the city of Odessa for a council change.
It's their own bylaws.
Were they not changed for two, for Larry at one time?
Bylaws can be changed, it's just a...
The bylaws can be changed, I mean, I'm, I'm not aware of the...
The council members' term did change by going to the voters, and they supported the change to a four-year term.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and approve, and we're not doing anything in MOUTD, let's go ahead and approve the franchise committee, that way that we can move on to the next one. So, do we have a motion to appoint these two back on to the Cable Franchise Committee? Motion? Can I say?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Cable Franchise. Now, I need nomination for Odessa Housing Finance. Putting Cruz back on, and putting Connie back on.
And a one-year term for Melanie would be my motion.
That's a motion, we have a second. And motion second.
What was the motion?
Motion was to put Cruz and Connie on for two years, and Melanie for one, is that right, Dewey?
Yes, sir.
It's a three-year term.
Is that their bylaws?
The three years from Cruz and, I'm, right.
I thought they were two.
No, they're three.
Can you, can you, I like this on this...
Change the bylaws first.
Is, is the motion with the amendment of the bylaws due?
Yes, that's what I mentioned before him when we were talking about, let that happen.
But Dewey, there are ways that you change the bylaws, and it's not with us sitting here saying, oh, y'all go change your bylaws. There are steps that you follow to change bylaws. There have to be notices, all sorts of stuff. I mean, you just don't pour rabbits out of hats.
Well, you don't stop continuity on a million-dollar project either.
Okay, we have motion and second.
We, we're gonna have discussion?
Yeah, that's what we're doing right now.
Connie, I have a question. How often do y'all use legal advice, or do you need to have a document read frequently? So, at the end of the day, I mean, this is a huge project, right? In other words, and obviously, like you, you just told me, I mean, we get free advice, I mean, and when money's tight and everything else, it's, it's a good, it's good to have somebody with that kind of experience. The point I wanna make is that I, I think it's important that we do keep Melanie on there because to see out the project, but at the same time, we need to do steps to make sure that we have somebody to take over, because no matter what, even if, let's say, this doesn't pass, you're gonna have to find somebody, right? So...
We do have, we do have a legal counsel, and, 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 consulting, but Melanie, of course, has a big issue with this.
But I wanted to ask that question, because the point I wanted to make was that no matter what, I mean, it's always appreciated when somebody serves and they're able to give their time and, because, I mean, you don't get paid for it, so, so you're doing it because you wanna give back to the community. Yeah, I appreciate Melanie doing that, so at the end of the day, but we also have a responsibility. You know, that's one of the things I've always done when I've served on a board, is that you have a responsibility to do the right thing for the community, but you also have to make sure that you start steps, or when you leave, there's something there to replace yourself. And I think it's important that we do. So, I wanted to, I appreciate you, Dewey, I mean, what you're doing, and I will support, you know, the one-year extension, but I think we need to make sure that we don't let this happen again, that we're at this point where we're like, we can't let somebody go because of that, because then why have rules if you're always gonna make exceptions?
Dewey, this same thing happened a few years ago, and they did not change their bylaws.
And they made the adjustments.
But they just did the same thing you said, well, just let them do it for one more year. I mean, if they were serious, they would've changed their bylaws, but they're not. I mean, you can't just say, oh, this one person is so important, we're just gonna let them, you know, go. No, you can't do that. I mean, it, it sounds great. I, I think Melanie did a wonderful job, but you have bylaws. And I think it's wrong to do that.
Is it okay to do this, Larry? I mean, to do it the way Dewey...
Well, I think the city, the city's okay. I mean, Barbara is correct, and it needs to meet the bylaws, but if I understood it correctly, the motion was the appointment with the change of the bylaws. If the bylaws aren't changed, then she's not appointed.
That's right. Exactly right.
Well, that's, okay.
Y'all want to change your bylaws, because obviously, last time that this happened, you didn't wanna change your bylaws, you just wanted to put your people in.
Is Jill here or is she gone?
She's not here, but I think we were confused on her term limit. We thought she actually had one more year, so we were absolutely confused about it.
Can you come up here, please?
I think we were confused. Connie Coons, of course, Odessa Water Realtors, I am on the board, Odessa Housing Finance Corp. Melanie is, we thought she had one more term, actually, and so she's just been such an asset to us, and we rely on her for her expertise. She's been great this year, I've worn, worn it to the end.
That's, that's not what I asked you.
And yes, we will...
The last time, the last time this happened, oh, Dewey was, I mean, Dewey was on there, and he was just so important, we just can't get him off, and we got somebody else on there. And we talked specifically about y'all changing your bylaws, and you didn't do it. And yes, I, she's a lawyer, she's important, but have you asked any other lawyers?
You're going to appoint the, you know, the person...
There may be, I know quite a few lawyers out there that get a lot of your time.
I don't think the position of lawyer is as important as the position of the continuity of the project.
Absolutely.
Eighteen months ago, this project was dead. We lost financing. We were not able to provide low housing opportunities for our people in Odessa. This group was able to make these changes, and I think with the bond people that are doing this, Bill, a continuity of your board until this is done is extremely important in the city of Odessa, in this project.
It's our citizens that are...
Dewey, may I ask you? When you were on the board and this council told y'all, we're going to let you stay...
I wasn't on the board of Odessa Housing. I don't know what time you're talking about, Barbara, I'm sorry. I was not on the board at Odessa Housing at the time that you said that the times are expected.
I thought it was you, I'm sorry.
It was Chris Cole and I...
But anyway, the people that were on the board did not change those bylaws.
Well, this motion is contingent upon the bylaws being changed...
So was the last motion.
I don't have that in front of me.
I don't believe that was, I don't know that, Barbara, I'm not gonna argue on that point. I'm just saying that my motion now is contingent upon if y'all would like for Melanie to re-serve, and it's our impoundments to do so, that the bylaws need be changed in order for her to allow a one-year term in the attitude for the regular terms that they have.
Okay, any other comment?
Mike?
Good one.
You have a comment on it?
No, I, I think she needs to stay. I, I think she needs to stay on there. I think she's about a part of that, that board, and I, I don't think we should be changing right in the middle of the, I mean, that's a big project out there going on, and I think her expertise, she leads in that, and...
For the record, Larry, you're saying that this is doable, we can do this?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Two?
No, I said aye.
Against and against?
Well, you don't ask for the answer.
Yeah, I just said all in favor. Three of them said aye, all against, and I heard Malcolm, that's why I was just, I didn't hear that.
Okay, I did not hear that, I'm sorry. I'm against.
He's, he's, he's against.
I'm for it.
Oh, you're for it, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I was my...
I'm sorry. We do not have anything under appointment of officers, so we entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.